Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of Board of Commissioners. Held for the purpose of transacting the general business of township. Today's date is October 11th, 2023. Meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered a live streaming feature. Meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mike Taylor, if you could summarize any public comment received prior to the meeting?
No public comment was received.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask you to please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment. Sound reflection out of the servicemen and women placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
For the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township. Yeah, the motion is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record it five zero. I would like to note that we are missing two commissioners this evening, Commissioner Stanish and Commissioner Wilson. And I will also announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its October 9th, 2023 workshop meeting to discuss one matter of potential litigation. All right, at this time, we're going to kick the meeting off and invite Brian Olzak, Principal Trails and Open Space Planner for Montgomery County Planning Commission regarding our potential trail plan.
Great, thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I am was one half of the Montgomery County Planning Commission team that worked with the township to produce this plan. And I'm very happy to say that, you know, we think that we produced a very successful and informative and helpful plan and that we hope that the township would like to agree. So let's, let me, there we go. First, let me just describe briefly and remind everyone what the goals of the plan were. The first was to provide for the recreational needs of township residents, trails and connections throughout the township were are one of the most important goals of respondents to our many public outreach methods that they really wanted to use the township's recreational assets more effectively and more often using trails. Secondly, was to identify routes that maximize connectivity between key destinations, including parks, businesses and neighborhoods in an equitable manner. Thirdly, was to find routes in the township that are safe, inviting, accessible and easy for users of all ages and abilities. We wanted to make sure that as many people of all stripes could could use these connections in the township to further their own specific needs and desires in the township. And lastly, as part of this particular plan, our goal was to create a list of clear implementable projects for the township to be able to digest as well as to prioritize for future capital improvement projects. So there were some key planned deliverables that were given to us by the township early in the process. Our first goal was to inventory all of the existing trails and pathways in the township to in order to create an effective way to use those in the further increased network connectivity for the township. Second was to identify gaps in the existing trail network, whether they be trails per se or sidewalks or bike paths as well. Thirdly, was to create a list of recommended trail improvements, including the relative scope of those improvements as well as future planning efforts down the road. And also was to create a single future trails map, which would act as the planning guidance for all potential connectivity and trail improvements going into the future. And lastly, was to create a very easy digestible way to view all of our potential recommendations as well as all of the relevant information for those respective projects in a very digestible implementation matrix. So firstly, in our planning effort, our goal was to create an inventory of all existing conditions, not just trails and other facilities, but was really to create an inventory of existing pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. And again, that includes not just trails, but sidewalks, greenways, bike lanes, as well as low stress streets that people could use either walk or to bike within without any further improvements, as well as some what we might call unofficial trails that people use relatively informally, as well as crosswalks. Secondly, was to inventory the environmental features which we needed to make sure that we did not impact significantly or that we wanted to preserve and connect to relatively easily, such as floodplains, water features, woodlands, preserved open spaces and steep slopes. And thirdly, were to, our goal was to inventory community features which would act as those key destinations and origin points from which people could use the trail. And those included schools, recreation centers, parks, shopping centers, as well as employment, a major employment and business locations as well. So, public outreach was a very important component of the planning process. We had many different ways that people could interact with the planning team as well as as their fellow community members. We had a survey that we promulgated out to the public in September to October of 2022, which received an overwhelming response rate of 728 respondents, which is relatively rare for for us when we pursue planning projects. So we consider that a very high rate of response, which is represents a pretty good share of the households, approximately nine percent of all households are represented. In most types of surveys, we usually see something around one percent of the population or of households. Secondly, we also had a, an interactive mapping exercise called a WikiMap, which allowed people to connect. There are certain destinations or origin points that they would have preferred by drawing lines or polygons, and that received 49 individual responses. And we also had our first of two public meetings on the subject also in September, where we received the attendance of 54 specific individuals who were able to interact with exhibits, draw upon maps that we had for discussion purposes to really get a sense of what people were thinking initially about potential trail and other connections in their communities, which was also something relatively unique to this planning process that we've, of those that we've been involved with in the past. We were able to successfully have interactions with middle school and high school students and able to sort of vary the potential populations that we were getting input from. And we thought this was relatively successful. We had discussions with 31 middle school students at Springfield and 21 students at the at the high school, which which we thought was a great opportunity to expand the reach just of the knowledge of community planning and trail connections in the community. And lastly, we had our second large public meeting in March of 2023, where we had 74 individuals come, community members come, as well as many other children and other minors who we didn't get to record the attendance of, but we know that they were here. And so, all taken together, we we think that we have provided many ways to give inputs as well as to state their individual preferences about what they may see or want to see in the community. Some of the key findings was that Orland and Windmore really, residents of Orland and Windmore specifically, really desired many more walking and bicycling connections to other neighborhoods as well. Certain major roads such as Bethlehem Pike, as well as Cheltenham Avenue, see are seen as some of the largest barriers to continuing walking and biking in the township. And and Cheltenham being perhaps the largest by specifically students in the township as well. So we wanted to take those and many other findings to heart. Also, as a part of this analysis, we created this map using state level data about walking access to trails and open space and parks. And so these color blotches you see here represent areas within a 10-minute walk with pedestrian facilities. So in the red you see are the highest need. And this this factors in not just existing connections to those places, but also to also connections to existing community facilities as well as relative population density as well. So the the outputs say that these these places need particular attention. Medium need are those in orange, which actually take up perhaps a majority of the township. In light green are those with the with the lowest need, but still are beyond 10 minutes walking, safe walking distances to a particular park or trail facility. And lastly, the dark green are those who currently have access. These only represent about 38% of township residents who are in that darkest green area. And so the rest of the community is in varying levels of has varying levels of difficulty walking on a separated pedestrian facility like a sidewalk or a trail to community parks and other destinations as well. So so this was a major sort of input into our planning process. Some of the key findings, sorry, some of our other key findings in the survey specifically were that people most wanted to walk to a trail instead of driving to the trail. Eighty-two percent of respondents said they wanted to walk to those trails. And some of the most important barriers to reaching trails were gaps in the existing trail or sidewalk network, as well as the lack of relative close trails. So within this planning document, we propose not just a single type of trail, but multiple types of connections. So each one of these has a very particular development type that we would want to see in the township. Sorry, this, there we go. The multi-use trail here, the first one is the widest and sort of your gold standard of connections. Forbidden Drive is is a popular one, as well as our Perkyomen Trail, Penny Pack Trail, as well as the Wisecan Green Ribbon Trail just outside the township. Priority bike routes are those where they have on-road facilities like bike lanes, but bike lanes aren't the only ones that are included in that. The third one here is a relatively new facility type called a neighborhood greenway, which takes comprehensive approaches to slowing car traffic in neighborhoods, enabling pedestrians and bicyclists to walk or bike more comfortably, while limiting the amount of infrastructure expenses necessary to complete that project. Sidewalks are of course relatively common, so that is one other type. And lastly, is another type called the road diet or the complete street approach. This is a process by which you narrow down perhaps a road that doesn't need to be as wide as it currently is. And it includes adding bicycle infrastructure while also continuing to maintain higher levels of vehicle traffic, all while ensuring safety is of the utmost priority. So we took those five different approaches and used our existing information, all of the inputs that we put into the our mapping model here and created a network made up of all of those types to create a relatively diverse network in the township. So just looking at some of the network by the numbers here, we're proposing 28 new trails and routes in the township, which is all told, if totally built out, would include more than 25 miles of new trails, bike lanes, sidewalks and other types of connections in the township. And that includes almost 10 miles of multi-use dedicated biking and walking trails, 2.5 miles of new on-road bike facilities like bike lanes or or other types of pavement markings like sharrows. Almost eight miles of neighborhood greenways, these are impacting your lower volume streets, your neighborhood streets that are township-owned. And lastly, about a little over four miles of complete streets and road diets, which are primarily on state-owned roads, which tend to be the busiest ones that we see in the township. And just last, I'm sure, yes.
What's the significance of the overlapping areas?
Oh, yes, I'm going to, I'm going to show you that in the next couple of slides. But so we essentially broke down the township into four main sections to sort of organize our recommendations together. I'm going to go through each one of those in a few.
Am I saying that right? There's shared.
Yes, 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 you're right. You're right. Yep. Thank you. Okay, so for each of those 28 segments, we created a segment profile, which explains all of the relevant information that you, the township needs to know in order to pursue further development of these trails. So each one includes about seven or eight different sections about with a narrative. The first one, project scope and status, refers to what the trail currently is right now, if it is in existence right now, or if it needs to be conceived of. A little more describes some of the potential project ideas. Description of the gap in service analysis that is relevant to that particular trail. It may note whether it's in a high need area or in a medium need area, for instance. It also mentions some of the key community institutions or assets that are connected by this potential trail. The connectivity section here describes specifically what other trails in the network that it would connect to. One of the most important ones here is a rating on its feasibility. This overall document really is what we would call a feasibility study. So we haven't designed any of the trails yet. A lot of further engineering and design work would have to be pursued for for most of these in order to make them a reality. Our job at this stage was to essentially go through some of the major issues, some of the major constraints, whether they be right-of-way, potential environmental issues, potential ownership or acquisition issues, and to essentially summarize how feasible these are in relation to one another. There's also a cost rating, and so we didn't provide detailed cost estimates because that frequently can only be done further in the design phase for many of these things, but we did provide what we might call a, an order of magnitude level of cost estimates, factoring in whether they may require certain larger structures, say like bridges or boardwalks. They would tend to be more expensive if they did require those elements, especially if the route only required certain pavement markings. And so we would rate those lower on the cost level scale in that case. And lastly, we factored in all of those potential issues and rated each segment as high, medium or low, depending upon all the relevant issues and whether it specifically was mentioned in many other planning documents throughout the years in the township. Oh, I'm sorry. One last one is, we also note the responsible party for whomever would develop the trail, as well as any potential partnerships that may aid in the development of that trail as well. So a lot of these, we noted are potential township-level projects, although some are current projects that are happening that the county is currently pursuing, and there's others that are again pursued by other parties as well. So that that is all mentioned for each of the 28 segments. So as I mentioned, each section, each part of the township was broken up into specific sections. This top one here, I'm going to go through each of these relatively briefly, and feel free to stop me if you have any questions. For those, for those that you that can see, the most important trails that you see here are those in red. Red is the multi-use trails here. There are the Walnut Avenue Connector, which is currently being pursued by the township. And some of the other more important trails is what we're calling the Orland Rail Trail, which is on what we think is a currently not abandoned railroad right-of-way, which can be researched further potentially by the township to see if that is indeed the case. Our level of analysis did show that it's potentially still active, quote unquote. There are many other possibilities of things that may happen in order to to figure out what is required for that. But those are some potential improvements. Some of those in orange you can see here are also neighborhood connections via neighborhood greenways. So some of the major ones here are a Lorraine Avenue and Plymouth Avenue Greenway here, which are your major north and south connections there as well. Those in green are are your bike facilities. Many of those are just on the outskirts or on the border of the township. So that would require you to work with Penda because they're state roads in that case. Let's see. Oh, there we go. So now we're in section B. We're towards the middle of the township here around the the school complexes. Now, you can see here that from east to west, one of the major proposed trails here is the Crescent Trail, which has been mentioned in many different Springfield documentation, planning documents, I should say. And so we've again would start at the at the current trail that is in existence here right off of Willow Grove Avenue, and that would work its way potentially along LaSalle's campus, as well as to wind its way through the Flower Town and Erdenheim sections of the township to eventually connect to the Wisecan Green Ribbon Trail. Another major, some major improvements you would see here are those in yellow. Those are your complete street or road diet projects. Cheltenham Avenue here was again one of the the most mentioned barriers for connectivity in the township. So we thought this was very important to address in future planning, potentially to reduce the number of lanes from four lanes to three. Obviously, Penda collaboration and partnership would be required to affect that as well. As well, you can see here the continuation of this north-south neighborhood greenway here is composed of the Hall's Lane Connector here in Greenway that goes all the way from Church Road to Bethlehem Pike in this case here. Section C focuses on the Windmore and as well as Erdenheim areas. Again, we have some major complete streets or road diets that can be considered, such as Willow Grove Avenue, as well as Cheltenham Avenue. One of the other interesting pieces of this is the the this further east section of the Crescent Trail, which would connect from Philadelphia and wind its way partially through the Pico Corridor here, and then further work up on some sort of potential side path on Mermaid Lane, while also connecting to Mermaid Park in this in this particular instance here. Another major aspect of this section is this east-west connector, which goes from east to west, as it suggests, and is 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 one of the only east-west connector that that would be possible in this in this potential plan as well.
Could you remind us why you're, you know, in the conversation of the trail meetings, we talked about that connector potentially being set in as opposed to?
Yes.
Could you provide some insight into your choice?
Sure, sure. In this, in this particular instance here, the 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 neighborhood greenway concept tries to either find routes that are parallel to major vehicular roadways and to essentially try to adapt them for to to discourage cut-through traffic, which may be, which may be happening on some of those roads in order to avoid the the more busy roads. And in our case, you know, we we noted that in the Stenton section here is that that it is potentially desirable of the township to see some road diet in the future of that. But but in this case, admittedly, there are some compromises that are that are made in terms of that connectivity. The neighborhood greenway concept tries to, again, slow down existing vehicular traffic and to potentially prevent the cut-through traffic in some of those other instances as well. But I think in the plan, we do, we do mention that in that in that particular case, that a Stenton Avenue, another look at Stenton Avenue would be would be recommended in the future. And lastly, section D is the bottom of the township here. And some of the the interesting pieces here are a trail connection on Wisecan Avenue here, leading from Flower Town down to the potential or the the Wisecan Green Ribbon Extension that run will be running along the Stenton Avenue, connecting to the existing pieces on the Morris Arboretum parcel. And then we also provided two, two existing proposals that are are being considered, one by Philadelphia and one by Montgomery County there as well.
Do you have a status update on that extension?
On the the one that's in this area here?
Yeah, it's a long step.
Oh, I'm sitting. It is very near completion. There are just a few legal agreements that need to be executed.
Very near.
The completion of the of design. So we're at 99% design, essentially. That 100% will come once those legal agreements with Erdenheim Farm and other entities such as DCNR are executed. We anticipate that those would be completed, legal agreements would be executed and completed by the end of the year or early next year. And that, of course, is a project the county is is already pursuing. Some additional resources that we've included in the plan are that implementation matrix I mentioned before. Oh, yes.
On that point, just because the county is going through some turnover in terms of their commissioners.
Sure.
Does that affect these?
I don't know.
The effort or the momentum or the urgency to get those done?
Not from our point of view. Yeah, we don't anticipate any any interruption in that in that regard. We have money that's already committed to the development of the trail. So we already have basically construction funding secured in that respect. So so we don't, I don't believe that we would expect any any delays out of the out of the ordinary. Some of the additional resources we have are in the plan are that implementation matrix I mentioned, which includes some easy to to digest information about each trail segment, as well as potential funding sources for each one of those segments, depending upon the scope and the type of improvement that is envisioned. And we also have provided a number of recommended maintenance tasks and schedules based upon our own experience with the county, with our parks, trails and historic sites division. We've also provided in several appendices, basically a record of all public outreach processes of the of the plan. So yes, I'm happy to answer any further questions, but I'm I'm thank you for letting me discuss the plan.
I have a question. Can you describe what makes a greenway a greenway?
Sure. Specifically, a neighborhood greenway, yes. Let me go back to that section here. A neighborhood greenway is essentially using an existing street, existing right-of-way here in the lower right-hand corner. Frequently, many municipalities own several streets. I think that the township owns about 70 miles of of streets, I believe, in the township. And we believe, we believe that these are some of the most underutilized spaces that municipalities have when it comes to connectivity. These are particularly geared towards neighborhood, low-volume residential streets, streets that have lower than 3,000 mile or 3,000 vehicles a day on them. And basically, in each situation, it might change depending upon the existing condition of that particular street. But we would generally recommend enhanced crosswalks. If also pavement markings that indicate that bicycles are permitted, that's that's what you would see in that green section there at the bottom. And frequently, it also encourages, in select cases, narrowing the roadway to slow down vehicles and to basically call further visual attention to pedestrians and bicyclists and other users.
Does that say twenty miles per hour in there?
Uh, in that particular, uh, yes, in that particular example, yes, that that that's sometimes that is used. It's not used very often in Pennsylvania. Um.
Isn't that illegal? He's twenty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty-five. But in this, yes, so but 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 you uh, the the idea being that um we can either slow traffic via um looking at the uh the speed limits or in 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 most cases to actually change the physical uh the the physical infrastructure of the street to um to increase um slowing of vehicles.
Uh, we are gonna open up to public comment. Um, just if any commissioners have questions, specifics, we can do that first.
So that's two for.
We, I don't know if we need a priority of the board to talk about the sidewalks at the trail committee, but in conversations here, we've talked about implementing sidewalk priority some sort. Uh, and hopefully, I think in the conversation here, we had said, well, once the trail plan comes together from the from that we can derive such uh perhaps maybe implementation metrics for sidewalks. Do you find that would be an easy job? Like, what would that take to create, let's say, an implementation matrix just for sidewalks, just because it's unique interconnection of of public and private partnership for sidewalks to happen?
Sure, sure. So we do, I mean, we can certainly pull out those examples of of the segments that include sidewalk. Um, that would be relatively simple with that that may not include um all possible sidewalk improvements that you're envisioning um for the township, but um but we definitely have those as part of the stack of recommended segments.
Be um easily simple enough to create a similar, I guess, may probably a more simple matrix of even the cost marker for some of those sidewalks or is it by distance, basically?
Yeah, it it would essentially be by distance in our case, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, great. Uh, let's let's open it up to the public if they have any questions. I do wanna um let you know, though, that um written comments will be accepted through December thirteenth. So even if you don't have a question tonight or something comes later, um, submit um those written comments. Our website, township website, has a pretty hefty page dedicated uh to this. All sorts of information, links to to the meeting notes and that sort of thing. So uh we will be taking that written comment. Um, but if anyone wants to um ask questions, public comment, please do so now. Uh, just remind you, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Alex Klinger. I'm at seventy-eight eleven Elm Avenue, and I I it's it looks like a great plan. I'm really excited about it. And um but I'm also interested about the greenways because like I was seeing some of the places that it was recommended to have the greenways and one is like Montgomery Avenue and like that is like um very like I don't see what you could do like will the residents like that live there be able to say like, I don't want this to be a Greenway? Or, you know, like, like, or there's like no places, no place to put sidewalks. It's like, and I don't know. Like, it's this, it's the feasibility there. I guess that'll be in your um in your like further down the line, but I guess it uh how, what are the, like, the people that are near the trails or the proposed trails, do they get to get notified or do they get to have some input into that um discussion?
I'll just make, I'll make one comment and certainly begin through Brian, but um, you know, this plan is a aspirational comprehensive plan within this plan are dozens and dozens of projects. Uh, it's unlikely all of them will will get done. Uh, the hope is to prioritize and increase the walkability, increase the connectivity. So none of these projects will be completed and underway as a result of just having this plan approved. So every individual project, like any project, will have opportunity for public feedback, comments, all that stuff.
And and just to pick up on that, yet, we've noted in places where um certain potential projects are more difficult uh just generally because of constraints uh from a geomet- a geometry perspective of the road versus other potential impediments, cost. Uh, we've tried to incorporate uh all of those and to note them down essentially, but you know, I think as you mentioned, you know, it's it's ultimately, you know, in the township's discretion what which ones to pursue and which not.
You know, for example, like the Walnut Street Trail that will be completed, you know, it's already funded. I mean, that that was covered in probably seven or eight different meetings and, you know, over a long period of time. So all these projects will will be out in the public open.
Hello, Mary Ellen Reeves. Um, I've actually tried to get through your one hundred and fifty-four page document online. Very comprehensive, great. A lot of information. Um, couple of questions. Will this presentation be available online as well? Some of the information I could not read from where I was sitting and.
Yeah, and I believe this presentation was part of tonight's packet online.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to look at that. So that's my first question. And then in the segment profiles, there's a spot where it says responsible party and partnerships. Um, help me understand what that means, responsible party and partnerships. If we have a partnership with a certain group to that is responsible for a certain segment of this, that's an unelected body, I'm assuming, correct?
Well, I think a a good example of that is a state road where Pendak would have a say and be a partner in that.
Right, but it also could be like a a planning commission of some sort as well, correct? Like, there's a Delaware Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Is that part of this as well? Didn't I read that somewhere?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, they're they're listed as potential partners. Um, and so, yes, there's it sort of iterated all the possible partners who wouldn't necessarily be the project sponsor, but they may be stakeholders in that in that project.
Especially if there's funding through a certain group and that
Right.
becomes a partner who we don't know yet.
Right, so that would be an unelected body. So I'm just concerned about what that input would look like. I don't want to re- usurp the power of the elected body for any partnerships. And just, I'd like some more information going forward, what that would look like. Because you are elected officials by the township. And while it's great, there's partnerships all over the county. I totally understand that. But if there was some more clarity around that, that would be great if that can be included in a future document. And that's really all my comment is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Goldberg, one oh five Erdenheim Road. Um, I just wanna make a a point about neighborhood greenways. Uh, where I live, old part of Erdenheim and just next to Chesney Downs. Basically, the entire neighborhood is used as a neighborhood Greenway. Scooters, tricycles, bikes. The people walking babies and baby carriages, the roads are used by, you know, pedestrians and bikes and many other kinds of vehicles all the time. So by the, like, in the case of Preston, you'd just be formalizing something that's already happening. And what the the the, that would be an easy win. I would really encourage the township and the community to implement some of the easy wins like Preston as soon as possible to generate some uh enthusiasm and and create a sense of kind of inevitability of the fact that we're we're a, we are a pedestrian and bikes, bicycling and uh, uh, you know, friendly community. And uh, and like I said, all you'd be doing is facing up to the reality that people are all over the road anyway as it is. And it would help people coming from out of the community who didn't already know that, like, hey, I gotta slow down. So and I just think the plan is fantastic. And I'm very excited about it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pat Hines, um, eight oh eight East Pleasant Avenue, Windmore, uh, member of the AC. Um, was a am still a member of the ongoing uh trails uh investigation in the township. And I wrote, I really would like to thank the uh county for their partnership and bringing some ideas to the table that probably none of us really thought about before. Yeah, we can be blinded as to what, you know, what this means and uh, you know, the really some some good work so far getting us thinking about how how to make Springfield Township more walkable and uh navigatable for, you know, people who aren't dri- driving or being driven. You know, so thank you for the beginning of a hopefully long and fruitful effort.
Thank you. He's better than you have to help you, help pay for this. Any other comments? It's quite great. Thank you. I will um remind again, we'll be accepting written comment on um on the plan uh through December thirteenth. We do anticipate that the board will um consider a resolution to adopt the plan officially at our December uh business meeting, so. Sure.
Hi, it's Alex again from Elm Avenue, and I was just wondering, um, this, you said, you know, like, this is in the planning stage, and I think that um, Brian went through the uh timeline, but could you just go over that again, like, how, like, what you perceive is going forward with um, like, getting the like, what happens? Like, the plan gets approved and then you start start doing things or getting funding or whatever. I so just to recap what the timeline is on this.
Yeah, I I wouldn't say that there's a set timeline. We would, we would adopt it or consider adopting it at our December meeting. Then it becomes an official record of a plan, aspirational plan. So at that point, we would plan with our budget, we plan with the planning commission, start to prioritize what we want to tackle, what we want to go after funding for. So that would be, that would be something that we would do on an ongoing basis because really the connectivity, the walkability is a goal of ours to improve the township. It's never gonna stop. So we're always gonna be considering what we prioritize and what we spend.
You know, just, I would add too that it it that this has been a priority for the board prior to this uh activity. So, you know, that when we were exploring, you know, proving developments with like the Lab Rock Development, uh, we insisted upon the incorporation of a trail with that approval. Um, Walnut Avenue was was sort of put in motion for this project. So um, I think it's a prior, it's been a long priority of the board. This formalizes, I think, a lot of the uh actionable items that could be put in place in the future. Um, but yeah, it's definitely a goal of ours to continue to chip away and and I think make the township more walkable and more accessible. Uh, and it really was a a, just to commend the efforts of the county. Um, and and everybody else's input, public uh board. Uh, I know former Commissioner uh Graham, uh, he insisted upon having uh participation in a lot of the schools, students. Um, and it really was very valuable to um meet with them, you know, in the high school, the middle school, talk to them about that, get their input. Um, so it really was, uh, I think, a very equitable discussion. Um, so I just commend everybody of all.
Great.
I just wanna say one thing, uh, also to echo the same sentiments that everyone worked really hard on this, really appreciate it. Uh, but also, you know, to for those residents who may, as I went to community, presented this uh at a table there. Some people hadn't heard about the trail trail plan prior, that there's still time, not just now, but immediately now, through December thirteenth, to make those comments and make those suggestions. There's always gonna be time to make new suggestions and new ideas. This is the most salient time to do it, so we can incorporate it. And, you know, if there's something lacking, um, please come let us know. Uh, even myself, even sitting on the trail team, I'll be honest, I haven't even had time to drive through every single path yet. Hopefully do that soon before before uh December thirteenth, obviously, so I can be sure all those thoughts are incorporated. Uh, but that there's still time, not just now, but also maybe forward. Truly, it's aspirational, as they said. And your aspirations can change, and that's okay. Having it in a document one time does not um solidify it forever either.
Well, thank you, Brian, very much. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Okay, folks, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Report draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on the agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Okay. All right, uh, we will then enter our uh committee reports. So I will start first item, uh, regarding um speed limits on some specific streets. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, section one oh seven dash twenty-four, schedule one, speed limits to establish a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Maple Glen, Grace Lane and Fleming Road in Portland. The Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code establishes a maximum speed limit twenty-five miles per hour in a residential district if the roadway is not a numbered traffic route and is functionally classified as a local highway. However, in order to conduct speed enforcement activities, it is necessary for the Board of Commissioners to formally establish the speed limit and post signs to communicate the maximum speed limit to drivers. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If a second, any questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, well opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote. That includes uh my report. We will now go to um, the Chairman of the Cultural Resource Committee, Commissioner May, who's also filling in for reporting for Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, for the cultural enrichment, there's a report there uh for Commissioner Wilson's report regarding the uh recycling report. Please to announce that during the month of September two thousand twenty-three, Springfield Township residents recycled one hundred fifty-four point six tons of materials with a household participation rate of seventy-nine point three percent. The net cost for the month was twenty-six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. The board would also like to remind residents that the township's bagged leaf waste program runs from March through December of each year. During this time, leaf waste must be bagged and placed at the curb for collection by seven AM on your regular refuse and recycling collection day. Leaf waste includes leaves, garden residue, shrubbery, tree trimmings and similar material, but not grass clippings. The inclusion of the grass clippings, I think, would uh limit our ability to use it for compost. Right, so please leave out the the grass clippings. Leaf waste is processed by the township to create that compost, and that is made available to the public at the township's distribution site on West Whistaken Avenue. Residents are also reminded that it is illegal to rake or blow leaves into the street. Leaves placed in the roadway are a fire hazard where on-street parking is permitted. Leaves that are placed in the street also narrow travel lanes and clog storm sewers, which causes flooding. And uh, yeah, it's something we all want to avoid. That's it for us.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Public Works in the Facilities Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, one item this evening for seventeen twenty-five Walnut Ave. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an additional services agreement with BL Companies Incorporated to perform soil and groundwater sampling at the former Tank Heart Corporation of America property. Seventeen twenty-five Walnut Ave, Orleans. The purpose of the sampling activities is to document the presence or absence of petroleum infill material in the vicinity of an existing groundwater mining well number six, located on the east side of the property near Orleans Mill Route. And to detect the presence and possible path of volatile organic compounds. The cost of the work is six thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. That is my motion.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, well opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
That concludes my report for this season.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We'll now go to the Chairman, the Administrator of Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Pop.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I apologize in advance for the length of this report, but um, we'll start off
we'll start off with the the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the September reconciliation in the amount of $549,334.53. And the October bill listing in the amount of $1,301,774.78. And that is my motion.
If a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Next, regarding the 2024 budget meeting schedule. The meeting schedule is as follows. The budget workshop will be held on Wednesday of this this week. Next Wednesday, next Wednesday at 7:00 PM in this room, followed by the budget presentation, which will be held on Wednesday, November 8th at 2020, 2023 at 7:30 PM with the budget hearing on the following month, Wednesday, December 13th at 7:30 with the budget adoption, following that hearing on the night of December 13th at 7:30. All meetings will be held in the township Springfield Township Building on 1510 Paper Mill Road. And again, that is the 2024 budget meeting schedule. Next, Resolution Number 1619, Distribution of State Pension Aid. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1619, a resolution distributing the annual state allocation to the Springfield Township Municipal Pension Plans in compliance with Pennsylvania Act 205, 1984, the municipal municipal pension funding standard and recovery act. The 2023 Commonwealth General Municipal Pension System State Aid was deposited to the township's concentration account on September 27th, 2023, in the amount of $565,305.16 and will be distributed into the township's pension plans using a formula provided by the Township's Pension Actuary. And that is my motion.
If a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
All right, regarding the township auditors, I move that the Board of Commissioners re-point B Bergvall and Company Certified Public Accountants to serve as the Springfield Township Auditors to audit the township's financial statements for the year ending December 31st, 2023, consistent with the audit engagement letter dated October 3rd, 2023. The cost of the engagement is $25,000. That is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
No, excuse me. Thank you. 25, the cost of the engagement is $25,900.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Next, regarding the business tax auditors, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of Markham LLP Certified Public Accountants to serve as the Springfield Township Business Tax Compliance Auditors. All services shall be performed at the sole discretion of the township and shall be in accordance with guidance set forth by the Pennsylvania Local Taxpayer Bill of Rights and any applicable township ordinance and regulation. The hourly rate shall be $175 per hour. Prior to executing the letter of engagement, it it shall be in a form acceptable to the township solicitor. And that is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Great. And finally, regarding the zoning hearing board meeting for the month of October. The zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, October 23rd at 7:00 PM within Springfield Township Building, where they will hear the following three applications. The first application of Holy Martyrs Catholic Church, owner of the property located at 120 Allison Road in Orleans. The applicant is seeking a variance, seeking approval to operate a preschool at the site that will offer childcare and educational services for children between the ages of 18 months and five years of age. The property is zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Three. They will also hear the application of Jonathan Bykowski, owner of the property located at 208 Echol Avenue in Erdenheim. The applicant is requesting a special exception and a variance requesting approval to construct a second floor addition to the home that is proposed to be seven feet from the side property line instead of the required 10 feet. The proposed addition will be constructed over the existing first floor. The property is zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Four. And finally, they will hear the application of LaSalle College High School, owner of the property located 8605 Cheltenham Avenue in Winmore. This, the applicant is seeking a variance, an approval to replace the existing monument-style sign fronting on Cheltenham Avenue in the area of Lower Bartley Field. The new sign is 45 square feet in size and is proposed to replace a 71-square-foot sign in the same location. That property is zoned within the Institutional District of Ward Seven of the township. Again, each of those three applications will be heard on Monday, October 23rd at 7:00 PM within this building. And that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Pop. We'll now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to announce the Springfield Township Recreation Center Advisory Committee was, well, we'll have an RFP proposed tonight. The Recreation Center Advisory Committee was created in January of 2023 to provide guidance to the Board of Commissioners regarding the future use and renovation of the township's Recreation Center at 120 Willow Grove Avenue in Winmore. As a part of this assignment, the committee will explore renovations that may be necessary to address existing building of the community. In order to complete this work, the committee has created a request for proposals to select an architectural or engineering firm or team of consultants to assist us. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of a request for proposal proposals to conduct a needs assessment, master site plan and design services for the Springfield Township Recreation Center. The scope of services shall also include a conditions assessment of the existing facilities, design development services, construction documents, bidding and construction administration services. The request for proposals is written in such a fashion that the township may award each phase of work separately before proceeding to the next sequential phase. Proposals are due no later than December 1, 2023, unless extended by the township. The Recreation Center Advisory Committee meets on the first Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM at the Free Library of Springfield Township. All of our meetings are open to the public and I commend our team for working hard on this. And that is my motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.
That is the conclusion of my report.
Okay, our committee reports have now been completed, so I would announce that the board is once again open to receiving public comment. Especially compliments.
I have lots of compliments. Christine Hesser, Oreman Avenue in Orleans. You had mentioned the monitoring, you just mentioned well number six. You're doing well number one, six, 11 and nine? That's correct, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I thought that because it's on the Thank you.
Great, you got it. Any other public comment? All right, great. The Phillies won, just to get that in the record. And at this point, I will entertain him. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Please record a five zero vote.